This meeting has been called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act. A notice of this meeting was provided to the Home News Tribune, The Star Ledger, and Highland Park Planet on January 4th, 2023, and was posted at Borough Hall website at www.hpborough.com and on the bulletin board of Borough Hall, 221 South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. In addition, the notice of this meeting via Zoom was emailed to the Home News Tribune, The Star Ledger, Highland Park Planet on May 12th, 2023, and was posted on the Borough website at www.hpborough.com, Highland Park, New Jersey, on May 12th, 2023, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. The fire exits are to my right and left. Fire exits are to the right and left of the council chambers. And Chief, can you lead us in the pleasurable arrangement?
A pleasurable arrangement. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under your God, and universal liberty and justice.
Rosa.
Mayor Foster.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Canavera. Councilwoman Hill.
Here.
Councilwoman Hill.
Here.
Council President Hirsch.
Here.
Councilwoman Kim Chohun.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kostonik.
Here.
Borough Attorney Schmier.
Here.
Assembly Minister Hoover.
Any questions on the agenda? Do you have any questions on the agenda?
No questions.
Now, we're going to move to honors and awards and presentation and the swearing in of our new police officer Jonathan LaRash.
Don't apologize, you got it. Everyone, this is our new officer Jonathan LaRash. Real quick, history of Jonathan here. He was born in Spain, came to America in high school, went to Lynnhurst High School. On graduation, he went to Marine Corps, served four years, became a rank of sergeant. Upon completion of that, he wanted to know how he could help his community and help the people that he knew growing up here, and decided to put himself through the police academy as an alternate recruit. If you're unaware what that is, you put yourself through the academy like a college course. You pay for it yourself, you don't have a job already. He came out of there from Atlantic County, interviewed with us, and we loved him, and we gave him the job. He's been on the road down with field training for a couple months. We're super excited he's here. We can't wait to see what kind of stuff he's going to do here. We expect a lot of great things. So please join me and welcome Jonathan LaRash.
I, Jonathan LaRash, do solemnly swear.
I, Jonathan LaRash, do solemnly swear.
That I faith, that I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Police Officer Highland Park.
A police officer of Highland Park.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of New Jersey.
And the state of New Jersey.
And that I will be a true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will be a true faith, faith and allegiance of the same.
And allegiance to the same. And to the government established.
And to the government established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
Under the, under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people. So help me God.
Okay, council, council. This is our public safety chair, council member George, and I think they should come in. Okay, then we can get them. We'll get to sign right away.
This is it. When she signs, you know that.
It's official, you can't leave now. Thank you.
Thanks, I appreciate you.
I'm just going to do a brief five-minute recess for everyone to.
There's some water and some light refreshments outside in celebration of Jonathan joining us.
We're going to come back into session. Motion to approve minutes as distributed, December 2022, regular meeting sessions.
Rosa.
Motion. Motion.
Someone.
Second.
Rosa.
Councilwoman Canavera.
Yes.
Councilwoman George. I think he stepped out. Councilwoman Hill.
Yes.
Council President Hirsch.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Chohun.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kostonik.
Yes.
Okay, council report, council member Kim Chohun.
Real quick from finance, your next, in July, you will receive your three tax bills that will reflect your new values. That, that is the, basically the outcome for this year's budget and for the revow that we went through that I talked about all last year. So, and that bill will be due August 1st, or if you like myself, and you still have a mortgage on your property, you'll probably receive something from your mortgage company. And I confess it as my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First off, I wanted to say that recently we had a meeting at Mollymaw Park, Carson Park, which was held and put on by our assistant administrator, Emma Von Thum, but also with the help of NPP stakeholders, Kalidri Hadhazzi and Melissa Gorduck, who really helped bring people from the neighborhood to Carson Park with the idea of figuring out what we could do to improve Carson Park and Mollymaw Park to make it more accessible and usable for the neighborhood. We are putting together a grant that will hopefully, if we get it, to use to fix up the park. And this event was fantastic to bring people together to figure out what some of the options are. We will shortly be putting out an online survey on the same topic, which will be open to everyone in Highland Park to give us ideas. We're hopeful we'll get the grant. It's eligible for NPP folks like, like us, and so stay tuned with that. I'd also like to announce that very shortly, I'm going to be organizing and running a series of downtown redevelopment walking tours. And the goal of this is to gather together in small groups and just take a walk up and down Raritan Avenue to talk about redevelopment, to show people where different redevelopment options are happening. I'm hopeful that this is going to add a different perspective and different understanding on what's the potential options and where we're headed in redevelopment. I think we've all seen things on paper and, and been to countless meetings where we've talked about this, but actually I found it seeing and explaining and talking to people actually out on the site and various sites can be very, very helpful to get a sort of visual picture or, or idea of where things are going. So stay tuned for those. The plan is essentially to take smaller groups, maybe even larger groups, out on these tours. We're going to work on some more details, putting together a schedule for that. So stay tuned to the website for that. If you're interested in signing up to be on one of those tours, please feel free to go ahead and email me at my borough address, mhill@hpborough.com. So that's, will be coming up over the summer. Other things that are coming up shortly, again, we always talk about the farmer's market as a jewel of Highland Park. Those are taking place on Friday, on Fridays. We also have on Thursday, June 22nd, Park Med Spa is going to be talking about their new location, having sort of an open house for folks with some opening offers. So Park Med Spa is, is up near the corner of Sixth and Raritan. So that's a, another opportunity. The title of the event is Beauty, Skin, Nutrition, and Everything in Between. So that sounds kind of like an exciting event. Wednesday, June 21st, July 12th, August 2nd, there will be swing music under the pavilion in downtown. So if you are a swing music aficionado or a dancer, and those events, those are at 7:30 on the 21st, the July, the 12th of July and August 2nd, under the Wookawitz Pavilion. September 10th, we have Arts in the Park, another huge event for Highland Park coming up, and that's a great event. June 17th is already over, so we're not going to talk about that one. June 23rd, 24th, and 25th is Indy Weekend in Highland Park. Indy meaning Indiana Jones. So this is going to, we'll have a townwide scavenger hunt on June 23rd. You can find details about all of these events at the Main Street Highland Park webpage, and lots of really great stuff going on. So keep those in mind as you are out and about in Highland Park. That's what I have to do.
Thank you. Councilmember Canavera.
I don't have a report, but I have a short statement. I would like to apologize to the permissions on the liaison forum, my fellow council members and the residents of Highland Park for missing meetings the last few months due to health reasons. But now I have a good bill of health. Thank you for your understanding of my being absent. All taken care of. There we go.
And Rebecca. No, same. Well, we're happy to have you back, Tara, and we're going to pray for continued good health.
Thank you.
Councilmember George.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a summary brief report. Congratulations to Officer Jonathan LaRash. He's very impressive, very interesting. Spoken to him on the street. More interviews for promotions coming up next week and also for officer vacancy. But the important announcement tonight for everybody, we will be putting up information on the website and on our social media. Last night, the Board of Trustees for the library voted in the transformation plan. As you know, the construction work is going to start there on the state grant. So the plans are finalized. We met with the architects, nice to have a briefing meeting on the construction schedule, and as a result, Mr. Bogus, who is the new executive director and absolute dynamo, who went through construction projects with other libraries, he and the entire staff put together their plan. The library will be closing for transition on June 30th, and it will be reopening at its, at a temporary location on July 17th. That location is 901 Raritan. You'll be familiar with it. It's the modern building with the dentist's office by the Dairy Delight. We will be using the bottom floor. A lot of engineering went into this. We're also going to be having a lot of pop-up events all throughout the town. The space is a lot smaller, so that the plan is to have a hot topics selection for people to come in. There'll be a small children's and small youth and a small adult, but it will be opening on July 17th. We anticipate the location to be used for about six months while the project is going on. We're going to have a longer, an announcement as well as a longer look at the plan and what the plans are for the events coming up and how they'll be held and where they're going to be held. The librarians will be, it's like that television show where the librarian solved all the mysteries of the world. They're literally going to be all over the town doing these pop-up events all throughout the months that were closed. And we have, unfortunately, or fortunately, have a lot of experience in remote work because of the pandemic when the library was run for over 18 months remotely. So again, those dates are closing, July, or June 30th, reopening at the new location on July 17th. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Jason Kostonik.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a brief report tonight, but a good one. So I'd like to start off with just a brief reminder of the grocery store transportation and online food shopping assistance available via the Department of Community Services. So if you have any like specific questions or details that you'd like about the services that we're offering in this period while we're without a grocery store in town, please contact the Department of Community Services at the community center by just walking up and during business hours or calling 732-819-0052. Up next, one of our biggest events of the year, the Fourth of July virus in the park, be held Sunday, July 2nd, at Donaldson Park. The festivities beginning at 5:00 PM and the virus beginning at approximately 9:15 PM. And that whole, throughout that whole time period, there will be music, face paintings, bounce house and hospital course and multiple food vendors. I think it's like over 20 food vendors, dessert vendors. So it's going to be a really wonderful experience as it always is. So hope to see you all there. The rain date is Monday, July 3rd. Other exciting recreational event this summer is the Park Stock Outdoor Concert Series, which will be Thursdays starting July 22nd going through August 10th, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM, Grove One at Donaldson Park. And there will be select food vendors available today. And then just wanted to mention that our 2023 camp season is about to kick off, so we're excited for another great year. You're going to have a day camp, a sports camp, theater camp going on again. So if you have any, if you need any additional information, and I think there's a couple spots left. If there's any one interested in the last minute registration, please visit our website. And then last but not least, have a pretty cool update from the Historical Commission. They're, they're going to be giving a presentation of Pinos on Thursday, July 13th. This was just settled about a day or two ago. I don't think it was a certain time yet, but keep your eye out for that. They're going to have a really cool overview of the history of Highland Park and findings from the recently concluded historical survey of our downtown, the Lincoln Highway, which was Raritan Ave, or 27, survey, or down, survey. So I think that will be really neat for anyone who's interested in our town and particularly the history of our town. Again, hope to see you all there. And that is all that I have for tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Council President Hirsch.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. I just wanted to talk about something first. Good evening, everybody. It's really nice to see so many people here and so many close friends and allies here who might, who might be here feeling disappointed and, you know, feel like that, you know, our town is not the safe space that, you know, that it might be. So I just wanted to mention a few things about Pride Festival and Pride Month and, you know, how we hope to move forward, you know, moving forward together. This morning, I attended the high school middle, the HB Middle School's graduation, the eighth grade. And it was a really nice event and such a wonderful cross-section of the community. And I'm sitting there and I'm watching all the kids and smiling faces and happy families. I have no idea what anybody's background is, what happens at home, or whatever, or how anybody conducts their lives here. I said, that says, you heard in celebration of one common law, and that's the advancement of our kids as they progress into the high school and learn how to be well-rounded, accepting, tolerant. I see several of our young residents here tonight who I have known over the years and I've spoken, we've spoken to over the years about, you know, about issues pressing our community, particularly as it relates to identity. And I definitely absolutely want you to hear this as well. Sometimes when you want to do something and there's no playbook, and there's no playbook to go from, you just have to steam ahead. I wanted my part in all of this to wash downtown in a celebration of pride, in line with the Queer Candy event and a celebration with Pride Month. And I wanted to just recognize Telsasso, Caroline Johnson, and other organizers who are here. Thank you so much for pulling off a Herculean event. It was fun and impressive, and I was really happy to see our library, the relations commission, the arts commission, and the boroughs, you know, play, play a part in supporting this event. As a former soccer coach, someone who doesn't know anything about soccer, but, but because I was the only one who was able to coach, sometimes when you put the ball in play, you have to make things happen. You have to make things happen by putting the ball in play. And what happened here was not only did we illustrate that Highland Park is a safe and welcoming space for LGBTQ plus community, but we also unintentionally demonstrated why we have to fly the pride flags in the first place. We have to fly pride flags because there is still bigotry out there, because we have to fly, and then we have to fly the flag correctly, because there's still intolerance out there. We have to fly the pride flag because we stand up for the rights, dignity, and safety of our LGBTQ plus neighbors, friends, and family. For many reasons, I feel a strong allyship with our LGBTQ community. We as a community and society must show our support and create safe spaces, like our, like this public building where we are convening, we don't have to feel a threat, we're not to feel the threat of violence or intolerance. And part of that is illustrating that support. Being excluded from societal institutions and traditions is not only emotionally painful, but potentially physically threatening. I don't take that lightly. For my entire life, I've tried to stand up for folks in fear of speaking their voices or fear violence if they do, or fear violence if they do have the courage to speak. There is nothing more important from a societal standpoint than to show our children that being perceived as other, whatever that means, is unacceptable. More, when we celebrate pride, we're celebrating what it, what it is that binds us all together, and that's love. We say love is love. That's a credo that I embrace, and I'll continue to embrace until my dying day. And I think that separates it from other cultural celebrations as well. When you talk about pride, we're talking about something that affects not one religion, not one code of beliefs, not one ethnicity, not one cultural background. It really is a universal understanding of acceptance, and then intentionally, it is to support and protect our friends in the LGBTQ plus community. When I first met with the organizers for Queer Candy, I was so excited to commit to having the borough purchase, assemble, and install pride flags on the avenue. Symbols matter, and being intentional with our symbols not only shows what we believe in in this community, but that this is a safe, welcoming space for our LGBTQ family, friends, and neighbors. That's something that I really want to drive home to, to the young residents here in the room as well. I keep looking up and losing my space, I'm sorry. We're also committed to the borough's Department of Public Works, we also committed to the Department of Public Works supplying, delivering, and seeding. And I thank our Public Works, and I thank our RAC Department and Terry for your involvement and supporting that. The flags were installed for the festival only as the borough does not have, the flags were installed for the festival. The borough does not have a flag policy on the avenue. In fact, this was the first time anything other than the American flag and the POW flag flew from those flag stands. That's major. And I was really, I didn't know that until after the fact. And I, you know, I felt really proud of our community stepping up and showing that support. However, as the borough installed US flags for Flag Day and as the Queer Candy event concluded, the flags were removed. And I have to take responsibility and apologize for my part in not communicating that, in not communicating, and not effectively communicating the fact that the flags were there for this event on the avenue. And that is in conjunction with our flag, with our pride flag raising that we're going to have on June 26th. I miss the pride flags, particularly when they came down. And I felt the joy when they went up, and I felt the hurt when they went down. They bring joy, acceptance, and happiness to our little town, and the removal also hurt for several reasons. I will do, and I will own my part to contributing to that hurt, even if it was not my intention. I'm sad that this turned into a negative, but I will not be deterred. Neither should you, and neither should our town, when it stands up defending folks who feel vulnerable, folks who are here because they want to have a safe space where they can thrive, be themselves, and contribute to society, just like we all do. The flag raising that I mentioned before has always been near and dear to me. So I was really excited to participate in an event that took it, took things to the next level. The point of pride is to be on display. So we don't have to hide anymore. So, you know, folks don't have to feel that they have to hide in their shadows, that they can actually be in their town and celebrate themselves, celebrate life, and celebrate everything that we have accomplished as a community when it comes to accepting and tolerating and just being ourselves. The initial positive response to the flags in the downtown was quickly reversed, however, in some shows to show their intolerance of the pride flags. That's also sensitive as well, because we recently have seen anti-trans sentiment seep into our public discussion, particularly on social media. I responded as best as I could, alerting our Human Relations Commission so we can prioritize the response and protocol. This is not only about the Borough Council, it's about the community working together so folks can feel safe and loved. To my friends and family in the LGBTQ community, please know that no barriers are insurmountable. And I am here to advocate as best and tirelessly as I possibly can for a community where you are safe, welcome, and heard. It's all I'm here for. It's all I'm here for any group that feels marginalized or unsafe. You should not live in a town where you do not feel accepted, or where you see symbols of hate and a react, and, and, and a response that does not live up to your expectation. Inclusion, part of inclusion, the tip of the iceberg, is about illustrating support. But now we have to do the hard work to show the support. We have the hard work to show where mistakes were made and how we can, and how we can, and how we can handle things moving forward. What's interesting is that just on a personal note, you know, at, at work, my, my day job, I am, I'm currently, I'm currently involved in DEI training, Diversity Equity and Inclusion training, which involves cultural sensitivity, language, when it comes to how we present ourselves, when it comes to who we speak for. These are all, these are all areas that, you know, are not comfortable spaces for me, and probably not for any of us, really, particularly when it comes to speaking for. I'm not here speaking for anybody. I'm here speaking for myself. I'm here letting you know the values that I share. The fact that we have a town where we have, where we should be able to put up symbols that embrace our, that embrace factions of our community, factions of our community that need to be seen, heard, and celebrated. Casual racism, casual homophobia, casual transphobia, casual antisemitism, and direct forms of all of those things as well, never stand, even if it defies your core beliefs, even if it defies your core beliefs. We will not stand for that in Highland Park. We have to rethink what it means to be part of one community because we have no choice. None of us is going anywhere. We have to figure out how to work this out. And do want to just apologize deeply for any of the harm that was caused, born out of something, born from something out of love. And, and, and these are the hard decisions that we have to, and these are one of the things that we have, this is the burden that we have to be moving forward. Another authority hearing from the Congress as well. I want to point out something on the, on, just a couple of things on the agenda tonight. The Raisers Cultural Center, there's a second reading of a ordinance tonight that will, will ratify the lease of the environmental center to replace this cultural center. that will ratify the lease of the Environmental Center to Raisa's Cultural Center, who will be the stewards of the property. And we are so appreciative of them for stepping up and showing the initiative and taking the cake under in this valuable borough asset. Raisa's does an enormous amount of programming, this is a public building, but Raisa's does a lot of programming over there, they have a physical presence over there. And I want to recognize Nicole and Francisco from Raisa's and thank them for, you know, for, for being the stewards, you know, for being environmental stewards, environmental jewel in our community. The, there is a, an ordinance on first reading tonight for providing improvements to the Felton Avenue Todd Lot in the amount of $100,000. This was, these $100,000 were itemized in the budget that we passed just a few weeks ago. And this is part of the administration's and the council's plan to improve our pocket parks and to create new public spaces throughout town in our neighborhoods. This is very exciting. And then I just wanted to encourage everybody to check out Atlantic Con, sorry, Matt, on the avenue on the corner of Second and Raritan. This is a jewel in the community, and, you know, sitting there really reminds me of what, you know, all the possibilities that our downtown have. And that is my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Well, administrator report. Or attorney report?
And no report, Madam Mayor.
Okay, I'll give my report. To start off, I'm very pleased for the dozen people that or so that came out yesterday for the Juneteenth flag raising. That's a huge accomplishment in our town. It's a huge accomplishment in our country that we were able to, that we are finally able to celebrate Juneteenth after so many years. I want to thank Sonya Hadlam for her performance, Ashton Burrell, Lucinda Holt for speaking, and educating us more about the history of Juneteenth and what it was like. And for her to have the story and the history being told to her because her family lived across the street from the woman, Obo, who was able to walk two and a half miles per day until she got to Washington DC and got to President Biden for us to have Juneteenth. And I'm very proud and I'm very happy for that. I want to thank Senator Deigman, Assemblyman Karabenchik for attending, and the students and the dancers and the Highland Park students that came out and to speak and to give us more words of knowledge and encouragement. And a big thank you to Norma Vada. Norma chairs the Human Relations Commission, and she did an amazing job with this event. I can't say thank you enough. Also, another heartwarming thanks to all the crowds that came out for the Caribbean Heritage Month last Monday. So it was a spirited event filled with music from Raisa's, the Cultural Center. And again, thank you, Norma, you're doing an incredible job with the Human Relations Commission. I was delighted today to participate in, to participate in a ribbon cutting for Global Grace Market. Please, I was pleased to see the start of Congressman Cologne that came out too, as well as students from Highland Park High School Acapella Group and many attendees. It was great, run by refugees, employed by refugees as they assimilate into their new jobs and into their new country. It was, I'm encouraged, and I was very pleased, and I encourage each and every one of you to go down to Global Grace Cafe and Marketplace and definitely stop in and utilize the services that they have. They have products from all over the world. Four, on a not-so-happy note, last Tuesday approximately this time, we lost to, there was a hu- huge horrific accident that took the lives of two persons last Tuesday night at the corner of North 10th and Raritan. It's a devastating loss to our community. The families had a wake tonight, and it's just a huge loss for the children who lost their father and their grandfather. Our hearts and our prayers go out to them. And I, it was, I was, I received a phone call from Governor Mercy the day after the accident, just letting us know that, you know, he's, he's going to be helping us move along the projects that we need and to create that road diet on Route 27 on Raritan. So yesterday, I also spoke with Senator Deigman, who is the Chair of the DOT, Department of Transportation, and we will be setting up immediately for them to help us to curb that traffic flow there. So it may be light, it may be speed harms, it may be narrowing of the roads, changing the speed of the road, but something has to be done, because again, loss of life occurred in that specific area. Last but not least, we have on next Monday, on June 26th, we will be raising the Pride flag here in Highland Park. And it will be, I think, at 6 o'clock in the evening. So please do come on out and support and show your support for each and every one of us in town as we do these various events. These events are put together so we can come together as a community, and as Matt says, make it one Highland Park. We are that welcoming town, we are that town that we're inclusive, and we embrace each other, and I want to see more inclusiveness and more embracing of each, of each other. So do come out for that. And on Sunday, July 4th, we'll be having the fireworks in Donaldson Park. So come on, and then that will be the start of Parks Stop Concert Month. That's my report. Thank you. Now, we're going to go into public discussion. It's time now for public discussion. Total time allotted is 21 minutes, three minutes maximum per speaker. Comments are limited to the item on the agenda. If you want to speak to an item that is not listed, please do so at the second public comment meeting later. The borough clerk will monitor the time and indicate when three minutes has left. She will give a warning when the 30 seconds remaining. I may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement, or if it does not adhere to the three minutes approved, or if the statement is absurd, obscene, or irrelevant. Comments from members of the public attending the meeting in person will go first. Others who are Zoom will be taken later. If you're going to, if you're interested in speaking, speaking to the microphone, those who are Zoom, please press the star nine button, and that will raise your hands, and we will chime you in after the persons in the rooms have spoken. Please begin by telling your name and address and speaking to the microphone. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Nicole Wise. I live at 318 St. Patrick Avenue here in Highland Park. And I'll keep this very, very brief. I represent Raisa's Cultural Center. And as Matt mentioned, the Borough Council will be voting on the authorization of a lease to make, and I want to say thank you. We are a nonprofit organization that we work to preserve cultural roots through arts, history, and ecology. And we will be building this space, we are going to be opening it up to the community. Everyone here is welcome, and we hope that we do see you there. We hope to be able to collaborate with people from the public, with the committees and commissions in town, with the library, with other entities in town, so you'll be seeing it. And we want to welcome you into our space as well, and know that we work, part of our work, our mission as an organization is to help to preserve and share untold, untold stories, voices that often don't get put out into the public. So we've been putting out a lot of info about that, and we hope you to hear from you and to be able to work in conversation. And I also want to say a special thank you to Matt, who worked with Matt Hurst, and also Terry Hill, who I've been working with very closely for months on this process. So thank you so much, and thank you to the entire council.
Austin Moriell, 226 Volker Street. Wasn't sure what I was going to say initially, but then something that Matt said in his comments really pretty much gave me an opening line. First of all, Matt, thank you for being an ally to the community, LGBTQ plus community. And something Matt said, he said something about a response that does not live up to your expectation. And that sums up last week for me. When I talked with Mayor Foster about a conversation she had had with a rabbi here in town, and then she stated that subsequent to that conversation, four flag, four Pride flags had been removed from the front of the temple well in advance to the other flags around town. That was a response that really didn't live up to my expectation. I felt that would have been an amazing time, an amazing time to try to build some bridges, to try to make connections between communities instead of to what could be interpreted as reinforcing some ignorant, ignorant beliefs. And in December 20, on December 20th of 2022, Highland Park passed or adopted a resolution in support of LGBTQ plus residents. And in part, it states, whereas Mayor Gail Brill-Mittler stated in her report to council on December 6th, Amy has no home here, is not merely an idealistic meme in Highland Park, it's a guiding principle and a firm commitment. It noted efforts by the Highland Park Police Department, Human Relations Commission, the Highland Park Public Schools, and the mayor and council to foster greater acceptance of diversity and to deter, and to deter any acts of intolerance. And I just really thought that that conversation could have been used to foster greater acceptance rather than to further divide the town.
Hi, my name is Alexis Thompson, and I live at President Street in the Triangle. I also had an email conversation with Mayor Foster, and thank you for getting back to me about the flag removal. But I'm going to have to share some of that with your constituents. In your Facebook post that you wrote, that you wrote and signed off on dated Friday, Jan 16th, you wrote, and I quote, "I want to assure you that our decision to remove the flags was not in response to any specific request or discriminatory motive." But in an email back to me dated June 18th, you wrote, "I made what felt like a fair decision, request of removal," and this is your emphasis, "of a few flags out of many, as the synagogue does have a right to make requests relevant for its congregants and their culture." So, proposal, I believe that you took some flags down based on the request of a religious leader, and those are on public streets. Now, I don't believe that they do have a right to ask you to do that. I mean, maybe they have the right to ask, but I don't think you have the right to do it. And we have something called the separation of church and state, and that's very important to people. It's important to people of the Jewish faith. I want to make that very clear, that that protects all of us. So as I wrote, so, hold on, I'm sorry. So, this also happened at a time, I just want, I want to add to what Austin said. This was at a time when the LGBTQ community are getting attacked from many sides, but specifically from the religious right in this country and all over the world. And we have a responsibility as, as a community that is quite accepting to show a better example. And it should have been a time when you had a discussion, opened it up to a discussion, and you didn't. Instead, you bent to the will of a religious leader in a secular community. And that's what I want to say. All right, thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Jennifer, and I live on 22 Red Clough Avenue. In the 2020 census of Highland Park, the estimated number of residents in the borough was a little over 30,000. Mahalo, mahalo, good evening, everyone. I'm 34, Hawaiian Chinese, and identify as Māhō, which is a third gender in native Hawaiian culture. I moved to Highland Park last year in April. I work at a local New Jersey small business. I shop at the farmer's markets on Fridays. My partner is a mail carrier and delivers mail to many Highland Park homes. I'm part of that 30,000. I'm not here to encourage distance between sub-communities in the borough. I came here tonight to talk about the importance of the values we teach each other in our collective community. Because whether any of us like it or not, we live here together in Highland Park, all of us. Regardless of the reasons why the flags were taken down, the fact is that they were taken down with disrespect. If there was miscommunication, that means to me that the LGBTQ plus community was not given enough respect or support by the people in leadership positions at Highland Park, despite however good their intentions were. It doesn't matter how good your intentions are when you're making decisions for an entire community if physical action does not follow. If the flags were only supposed to remain up for a certain period of time, why wasn't that discussed? If the cost of quality materials was out of the borough's budget, why wasn't that mentioned? When the flags were taken down, why weren't the people who advocated for them to be put up notified? I've never been in any political position, and yet I've come up with these simple proactive solutions in minutes. Burton Avenue is a public space that we all pay for with our collective taxes. It belongs to all of us equally. It should be a place that represents the diverse community that we live in. To quote Jackie Goldberg, the president of the LA Board of Education for the 5th District, who recently spoke in a meeting after a three-day anti-LGBTQ plus protest. Nobody has to accept me. I'm not looking for your acceptance. But you'd better treat me the same way that you treat everybody else. That's how we live in this country. You don't have to love me, you don't even have to like me. You can think that I'm the devil incarnate, but you'd better treat me like a decent human being, because that's how I treat you, even though you don't believe that I have a right to exist, and so on. A mutual respect should be easy. It's embarrassing that I have to come up here at all to talk about something that was taught to me in grade school. We have a unique opportunity in Highland Park to demonstrate to a country falling apart due to culture wars that many different communities can coexist peacefully together. Mahalo, mahalo.
Hi, I'm Alyssa Kaplan. I live at 323 Irisan Avenue. And thank you for being here. So I've lived in town nearly 30 years, and I see myself as a potential model, as a bridge that I share with the community. Because I am an Orthodox Jew, and I am gay. I raised my family, my children, as Orthodox Jews, and I'm very happy to say that my life partner and I just celebrated 19 years together. Say is that talking about tolerance is a problem, because nobody just wants to be tolerated. So tolerance isn't really the right word. People want to be accepted for who they are and appreciated for who they are. Also, talking about putting aside core beliefs, I think, is a problem. And I've had both of my communities pressure me at various times about giving up the other community, right? Why would I choose to remain an Orthodox Jew, given that there is a great deal of hostility within the Orthodox community towards who I am as a person? Because it spiritually speaks to me, and I challenge the Orthodox community to look deeper within itself at its core values and live up to those core values rather than having to put them aside. Because those core values speak to the fact that God created everybody, everybody, in God's image, and that everybody needs to be interactive with dignity and respect. Because of that, we all have the same level of self-worth, because we're all created in God's image. And I think that the religious right needs to look at its core values and go deep to find out. I also think that the LGBT community needs to see that there are, there are a lot, there's a lot of meat in religious life. There's a lot of meat in it, and suggesting that it just be abandoned because one is gay, I think is, is really so cheesy. So, I've been in town almost 30 years, and I have found a discourse online to really be very troubling and upsetting. And what I would really hope is that there is much more mutual respect for each other, that that can be expressed, and that we can be pleasant neighbors and townspeople together and be able to listen to and that we can be pleasant neighbors and townspeople together and be able to listen to each other with, with, amongst in our hearts for the other communities.
My name's Craig Hanon. I live at 227 Montgomery Street, out here on Highland Park. Like Alyssa, I've been in town for over 30 years. I have a somewhat different perspective on the issue of the flags. It's been discussed tonight very eloquently by our fellow Highland Parkers. And that is that, it's my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that posting flags or bulletins on the bulletin board should be for Highland Park-sponsored events. Like, we have a parade on, I don't know, Memorial Day and so we put up flags for Memorial Day. We put out things on the bulletin boards that are for borough-sponsored events. In fact, once I asked if I could put something up for a local event that was not a borough-sponsored, then I was told no. The policy is that only borough-sponsored events should be advertised in the bulletin boards. It seems to me the same kind of logic applies to the flags. Because otherwise we'd be in a situation where, you know, various groups, however meritorious, to, to, to some, could put up flags or announcements that would be offensive to others without appropriate discussion or appropriate decision by the Borough Council that this is something that reflects our shared values. And so, the concern I have is that we be careful not to open up a door where, whereby any group that wants to promote its, its place in the community or a specific event or whatever it is, that really should go through the Borough Council for ratification and approval as a sponsored borough event. For example, I think Juneteenth would have been a great opportunity to put flags up since there seems to be a borough, a borough consensus, a council consensus, that this is something that we celebrate together and it represents our shared values. Hence, you know, giving off to the employees on the 16th. That would have been to me something that, you know, should have been honored by putting the Juneteenth flags across where, because the council's already expressed its will in that matter, that this is something that reflects our town's shared values. So, I think with respect to our gay and lesbian friends in the community, I would ask that, you know, the conversation be open with the Borough Council and that if the council votes to, you know, honor, honor the community by having flags up across town, then that becomes a role of the council and it should be done that way. But not just to have it happen because, I don't know, I don't know how it came to council to flag her up, but it seems to be outside that kind of process. So, that's just my own perspective. It says nothing whatsoever about how I feel about the conflict between the one synagogue and the gay community, more about just how we handle situations where we want to honor or acknowledge, celebrate a particular issue of respect.
Hi, my name is Eric Lippin. I live at 123 South Adelaide. To the previous speaker, it was a borough event. The borough was involved in queer candy. The flags went up with the approval of the DPW. In fact, what I don't know what was followed was the taking down of them before the event. They were both put up for an event and four were taken down before the event. I am curious as to the process by which, I mean, I don't know, maybe when you become mayor, you have the right to redecorate the downtown to your whim. But honestly, taking down the flags beforehand was a capitulation to bigotry. I don't care the source, religious bigotry, social bigotry. The quote from the rabbi in a publicly made email was that the flags were, are a violation of human dignity. Was that reason to remove them? That someone said they were a violation of human dignity? They are not. It's not, it's not about sex. Like Terry said. It was cowardice to not stand up to bigotry. It was cowardice and in a front to the people in this town who look to Highland Park as a place of safety to take those flags down before the event. Maybe there's a policy after the event. It is cowardice to send out an apology, madam mayor, in which you say the flags were not taken down due to bigotry and then admit privately that they were. It was a lot. Cowardice to pass a new resolution about flags to make it so pride flags will never go up on Raritan again. On July, on June 13th, after all of this quietly put into the resolution about how flags are going to be flown, it was cowardice. And it was cowardice tonight. It was cowardice tonight to have a public statement and not mention this at all. No less than if the flags offended the synagogue, the synagogue does not have to fly a pride flag. But the sidewalk is not the synagogue. And it was cowardice and dangerous to every queer person, queer child in this town to capitulate to that level of bigotry. I am ashamed and disappointed. Thank you.
Yeah, sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to let you know, we did hit the 20-minute mark.
Okay, we did.
21, but it's up to you now.
Okay. We'll take one last speaker and then we've got to go on to the rest of the business here. So, you can speak and then we're going to move on to the rest of the agenda, but there'll be an open, public comment later and anyone who wishes to speak can come up and do so.
My name is Mark Shulson. I live at 36 Cedar Avenue. I've also lived there for 30 years. I really just have, you know, one statement to explain. Pride is the opposite of shame. And the point of having a pride week is to be able to say that, you know, this can be, by the way, I'm a cisgender male. I've been married to a woman for 30 years. That's not the point. I'm also one Orthodox Jewish, but I don't understand what the opposition is. If it had been the other way around, it's, it's the same pride that lets me wear my kipai in public because it's okay to be me. It's okay to be them. And by taking the flags down, that was shame. And I was saying, no, it turns out actually, you know, at least, at least over here in this town here, you probably shouldn't be. And I am very disappointed.
Thank you for your comments. Now, we're gonna go on to second reading. Ordinances require a second reading.
The ordinance authorizing lease with RISIS Cultural Center for 10th Avenue Road, 15216, also known as the UG, Young Environmental Education Center, was duly authorized for consideration of passage on first reading by title and affidavit of publication on file. The ordinance was also posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
Public hearing. Seeing that there's none?
Oh, yeah. I'm trying to get the one line.
Oh, I'm sorry. Forgot about that. Yes, public hearing. Check my mouse.
Is there anybody on, at home on the Zoom who would like to speak on this? If you, if you're not interested in speaking, but your hand is raised, could you please lower your hand? There were several hands up for the meeting session. So, please lower your hand. You'll have a chance to speak, generally, at the second of the comment. Again, this is specific to the lease agreement with RISIS Cultural Center. Please, right, I'm gonna try calling on, for the record, we have 36 attendees at home and three hands raised.
For raises?
For this item, I hope, but some of these hands were up previously. So, here we go. And forgive me, I'm a little nervous. This is our first call-in since we've all been on the microphone. All right, Pat, I've unmuted you. Your name is Pat on my screen. If you could please save your name and address for the record before giving your comment on this matter. Pat, you have to unmute yourself if you'd like to speak. Pat, would you like to speak on this matter? All right, I'm going to... That hand has been up quite a while, so I'm gonna assume the person walked away. Rob Scott, you're next. You're, this is, I've unmuted you. If you'd like to say a few words on this ordinance. You have to unmute yourself. Hello, Rob?
Yeah, just a minute.
I'm just relieved you're there.
Hello?
A public comment on the lease agreement with RISIS Cultural Center. Is this Rob Scott?
Uh, yeah, I had raised my hand before. This is a little confusing over.
Yeah, yeah. So, that's the first public comment period. There'll be a second one after we get through the business of the meeting. The comment now is specific to this ordinance that's being voted on.
Right. So, okay, so I'll just...
All right, I'm gonna lower your hand and you can come back later if you want. And it looks like we have no other hands raised. Just right there. Thank you.
Motion to adopt or reject?
Motion.
Rock, call.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman George?
I look forward to this agreement. I know the gatekeepers at the place. I've known them for a long time and watched them operate down there. Looking forward to getting this wonderful space and this great location by the river, moving again as part of our burgeoning interest in using the river. I look forward to it. I welcome you to the, to the leasehold. I vote yes.
Councilwoman Hale?
Absolutely, yeah.
Council President Hirsch?
Many months of hard work and I just really, really wanted to thank the council of Francisco and Terry and the Raydon, the San Antonio. This is gonna be such a great thing for the space. I have a project to.
Councilwoman Ken Chouhan?
Absolutely, yes.
Councilman Piston?
Yes, I had a great time at the Caribbean by raising festival. That was amazing.
ordinance number 23-2074, ordinance providing for improvements for the Fulton tot lot in the amount of $100,000. Clear.
The ordinance providing for improvements to Fulton and Taut Lot in the amount of $100,000 has been introduced and written by the Finance Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
Motion to adopt or reject?
Second. Separate hearing for July 11th.
Okay, yes, public hearing July 11th for this. Okay. Rock, call.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes, and advocacy works. Thank you so much to Abby and the team of, 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 of others who have really helped advocate for these improvements to, to our parks. They really tie our communities together, you know, part of the community neighborhood fabric. And something that we really learned in COVID was to put that reinvestment in downtown, in town, in neighborhood, downtown, wherever, public spaces, flipper tables, benches, places for kids to convene, safe places for us to hang out in the outdoors. Absolutely, yes.
Councilwoman Ken Chouhan?
Yes, and everyone stopped by Council, Council President Hirsch's house on the way to the new tot lot.
Councilman Piston?
Yes, and also a second advance.
A motion to adopt or reject agenda items 814 through R14.
So moved.
Second.
Rock, call. Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ken Chouhan?
Yes, and I just wanted to comment on the T-Mobile's hometown grant program from the NPP. This is a no cash match grant, so Finance Committee likes stuff like that. So, good job to Matt and his team, yes.
Councilman Piston?
Yes.
Resolution requires separate reading. There is none. Now, I'm gonna go to appointments. The food pantry, Scott Bernstein. House done Agent Ellen Freian writes and rent leveling board Dr. Heather H Price and she is a owner. She's filling in as an owner occupied. And then the zoning, zoning board Dana Corbin, Wolf from Helfer and Stanley Pheasant. Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes, and thank you, everybody, for stepping up.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ken Chouhan?
Yes, and I believe that we may have still one more opening on. I have to check. I'll check this week on the rent, um, the rent control board. So, as long as we have built our regular members, we will meet without alternate and we still have openings, but we do apply.
Councilman Piston?
Yes.
Mayor's appointment to Human Relations Commission, Lambo Yu. No confirmation needed. Now, we're at our second public comment time. 21 minutes is allotted. Three minutes maximum per speaker. Borough clerk will monitor the time and indicate when three minutes have lapsed. She will give a warning of 30 seconds remaining. I may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement or if it does not adhere to the three minutes provided or this statement is absurd, obscene, or irrelevant. Comments from the pub, comments from the public can be, attending can be on any topic allowed in this public session. Those who are on Zoom can chime in. To speak, press star nine on your phone and indicate your raised hand and announce yourself when you come in to speak. The Borough Administrator, please announce our, the Borough Administrator, please announce your first speaker if there is anyone that is on Zoom. She will.
She will to let the youth speak first. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Hi, my name is Clara Scott. My pronouns are she/her and I'm a senior. So, I actually just did a walk through the town to get some graduated. Co-president of the Sexuality and Gender Alliance at the Highland Park High School. Her name is Grace. She wants you to know that all the queer people in the town are deeply hurt by your actions. These are troubling times for the queer community and they need to know we're safe here, but either are in support of us or against us. And the entire situation has made it very difficult to stand. A flag raising is not enough. Put the flags back and show that the biggest in the town that they have in the place here. And I completely agree with her. I was ecstatic when I saw the flags up. I was walking home from school. I walked down Kino's. I saw the first flag. I started doing a happy dance. I was so excited. And then a couple days later, they were gone. And I joked about it and I was like, oh, because this is just what happens to us. This is just what happens to us. It's no big deal because it's just what happens to us. But you betrayed my trust. We broke my trust and something inside of me, it's very hurt and broken back. These are very troubling times for the queer community. I saw a lot of people here on the old trans pride stickers. Did you know trans people don't live past age 30? On average, they die. The highest death rate among trans people is suicide because they don't get the love and gender privilege. And these just slides away. And these children slides away, take away some of that love and share that need. I'm really upset, I'm really disappointed. And I would like you to listen to me when I say these things, and I would love to listen to you guys in reasoning onto why the flags went away, but you made it very obvious that I can't, because you have been lying about why they went away in the first place. That also hurts, because now I'm just upset that the flags went away, I'm upset that you're lying about it. It's sad, it's a sad pride month, thank you for listening.
Hi, my name is Royal Crosby, I live at forty-eight Lawrence Avenue, my pronouns are he/they. I'm a Rising senior at Highland Park High School, I'm also the next president of...
Your device needs to be unlocked.
I'm not a device. I'm the next president of Sexuality and Gender Alliance Club at our school. I'm here to ask for the council to...
Supremedated.
I believe we are fully functional now, again, I apologize for the disruption.
Sorry about that.
Is it all ready if I start from the beginning? All right. All right, cheers, nice one. Hi, my name is Royal Crosby, I'm a Rising senior at Highland Park High School. I am the next president of Sexuality and Gender Alliance Club, my pronouns are he/they. I would like to ask that we counsel reinstate at least a portion of the flags on Merritt Avenue. As a visibly queer person, it is incredibly important to me that this town remain a visibly safe space for me and my friends. I would ask the entire council to understand how big an impact something as small as a flag can have on our people. I have a similar story to Clara, seeing the flags every morning on my walk to school was a reminder that I am loved here, I'm safe here, in a time when I am not safe most of the other places in the country. I have blacklisted several schools from my college search, because I cannot go to Tennessee, I cannot go to Florida, I can't go to Texas for fear of my life. And that sucks, respectfully, that sucks. I, the day that the flags were removed from the whole street, I spent the rest of the day wondering what had happened and why suddenly my community was not worth it. There's still a week and a half left in Pride Month, and these flags only fly for a short while, it would do a world of good.
Hi, Abby's starting right now, River Street, so first I just want to encourage the funding toward the Tot Lot improvements, to say thank you, however, I'm gonna keep pushing and say, if we're not gonna have the vote on it, the public comment on it until July eleven, summer is already practically over, I would really love to see shovels and grounds July twelfth, so please do whatever it takes to continue to move things forward behind the scenes so that, you know, whatever we can do to get it, we'll also be able to have kids use it this summer. On a separate note, I was pretty disappointed to learn today that there was a policy passed for flag usage on the avenue for going forward, and that was passed, I believe, after the Queer Candy event. But likely in response to this, there was, actually I should say, update to the policy, there was that was added in, and I would just like to see that that be, take a little bit more time and hear feedback about creative ways that we could have various flags, more than just the American flag on the avenue. I think that was tasty, and I would just like to see that it take a little bit more time to look at that. It looks like, you know, that is something to create on an administrative policy, I don't know who, you know, is involved in that policy, but please reexamine that, because I do think it's important that we have both pride flags and other cultural flags on the avenue.
Tom Coback, two-oh-six North Third Avenue. Pride flag represents different things to different people at different times. To me, it represents pride and identity. To some Orthodox Jews, it represents the central Muslimist that runs contrary to their religious beliefs and practices. The First Amendment and basic principles of respect for others support their right to object to attempts to force on them what has at times been displayed as a symbol of the wrongs. Mayor Foster did exactly what she should have done when faced with a conflict between constituents in town. She listened to and empathized with both sides and did her best to accommodate the needs of each. Now one sign in a petition complains that the religious institutions are dictating what symbols appear on public property. I noticed in the Sunday update, however, that the petitioner gestured towards an understanding of the diversity of opinion in the Orthodox community, and towards the rights of congregants and synagogues in town. They take this as a positive sign that potentially could lead to a productive dialogue in the future. I understand that the LGBTQ+ community's anger at the hurtful, bigoted tweets of a member of one of the synagogues in town. I also understand, and I personally feel, the anger of many in the Jewish community distressed by LGBTQ+ activist support for organizations that seek to destroy Israel and target Jewish students for demonization and harassment on university campuses. I have also seen online narrative accusations, unreasonable demands of rabbis and others, and attempts to score political points, mostly all by community Democrat supporters in the wake of a hotly contested mayoral election which they lost. Not only has there been a targeting of Mayor Foster and members of the council, but also contempt aimed at the Orthodox Jewish community, several of whom objected to certain tolerance made by the losing candidate. There can be no tolerance of the aforementioned bigoted tweets.
Thirty seconds.
Each community must respect the needs of the other end of the town. The LGBTQ+ community has an absolute right to live proudly in town and to thrive without harassment or derision. Support for the Pride Festival and its tremendous success suggests this is the case. Likewise, there must be respect for conservative religious views. The public street has room to accommodate both, and that is what Mayor Foster and the council have tried to achieve.
My name is Lynn Rubin, I live at one-ten North Tenth Avenue in Highland Park. I lived there for forty-six years. First I want to say I apologize for whatever hurt you, I've been a teacher for forty-one and a half years, and this is disgusting. However, I've lived, again, on Tenth Avenue for forty-six years. Our block has changed, we have fifteen new young people, families, but children living on the block now. Last week, there was an accident at the corner, it's not the first, but it's the first fatality that we had at that corner. I got here to talk about twenty-seven, it was twenty-seven, because I can't fix it, it's a state highway, you have to negotiate it. We negotiated to have the speed drop from forty to thirty-five, well, it didn't help. This gentleman, who was not a gentleman at all, who killed the two people, right? Was going seventy-five miles an hour, and it's on record with the county. Seventy-five miles an hour at five-thirty in the afternoon. The Tenth Avenue is the last block in Highland Park that go, it's the only block in Highland Park that goes to Woodbridge Avenue, that's where the people were going. We get cut through, we are on the last, Eleventh is down, it's a one-way street down. If you can make that one-way street up and have a separate arrow making a left-hand turn, that would be great. I don't know if you could do it, but what I'm here tonight to ask is that they speed up our block. They come from Edison, they cut from River Road, the back way, all the way to Tenth, and then they speed down our block. It's ridiculous, this is not a new problem, it's an old problem, it's a forty-six-year-old problem.
Thirty seconds.
Speed ups, you did it on Cleveland, you did it on Harris, do it on Tenth. At least maybe that would deter people from racing down the two blocks to get to twenty-seven. The next thing I would like to say is, you had corners going on to twenty-seven, where people can't see whether the cars are coming. The chiropractor establishment on North Tenth, there's a tree there, you cannot see the cars coming, you have to inch out. Eighth Avenue is a curb, there are trees on a house, you can't see the cars coming from town. You need to start checking your streets and take them, the trees and the bushes. You did it on South Penn, you made the person, the owner, take out all the shrubs, because we had to inch out into the twenty-seven to see if there were cars coming from Highland Park. There's a problem at that block, it's been here, nobody wants to address it, the state didn't want to address it, and your hands are tied, what you got was a reduction in speed, you can't control that, because you're not the driver behind the car.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Kai Stevens, I live at two-fifty-six Seventh Avenue, Highland Park. First of all, I just want to thank everyone who's already spoken, because I mainly care to listen to people. But a lot of things are happening in Highland Park, and I didn't know a lot about them, and that's the main thing that I just do. But upon hearing a lot of people speak, I just really wanted to say what I know from my own experience. So I'm seventeen years old, I've lived in Highland Park my entire life, in the fall, I'm going to be a senior at Highland Park High School. I'm also a member of the Mayor's Human Rights Council, I have since I was a sophomore, and I'm very privileged to be able to do that, and to be able to partake in the community in some way. I'm in the Model Y Club, I'm interested in politics and community engagement. I also have performed at Queer Candy this year and the year before, and I have been openly transgender for over six years. So I was kind of confused when I first heard about some of the situations in Highland Park regarding pride, just because I like to consider myself, you know, politically involved, but also someone who has provided some sort of, you know, advice or something to look up to in a way to other kids in the high school or in this school that may have come out after I did. Because I was one of the first people in New Jersey to medically transition, I'm just a little bit sorry. So what I like to say is not on behalf of anyone else or any group that I'm a part of, it's just myself and my own opinions. I just like to say that I know that the Highland Park borough knows better, and I think they need to be more considerate and thoughtful when they're making decisions, and that ultimately will be needed. It's not more conflict, it's transparency, it's consistency, and it's clear communication, and I know that the people in my town are capable of that, and I really hope that they are, because I don't want to live in a town where, you know, my interest in community involvement and also a core part of my identity and my life has been the fact that I am something that I cannot control, and that makes a lot of people sick. So I just, I really hope for that, I hope for that clarity, I hope for that honesty, and I want people to understand that the future leaders that people really like to praise, you know, that use their community, are also people who are going through issues themselves. That with a lot of the issues that we've been talking about across the country, with these people who are, you know, being affected by all this legislation, it's, Highland Park is considered a safe haven in a lot of aspects. We have right next to us, at Brockers RWJ, it's the only pediatric endocrinologist in the country, or not in the country, in the state. So I just really want, I hope to people that I've gotten to know through that experience in the town and through local government getting involved, that it's really an important issue, it cannot be glossed over, and that the people that you know and that maybe you need to work with are affected by these issues.
Hi, my name is Kristen Springer, I'm at four-twenty-three Denison Street, my pronouns are she/her. I am a queer woman, I'm by my culture, and I'm the mom of an LGBTQ+ family. And I am here to obviously talk about flag issue, and I wanted to thank Matt Hirsch for his work, and I really think we need to remember what he said, that they mean love, Pride Month, and the whole pride movement is love, is love, right? It does not, it's not an affront to any religious or cultural group, it's about loving everybody, loving your neighbors, love is love, it's simple as that, and that should be sufficient for it. And I also think there's nothing I can say that's gonna be any more important or better than what you said, and I think that's what we need to hear, we need to understand, that having flags up and having these symbols is not just about niceness and love, it's about saving lives, right? Research shows that having supportive symbols saves lives, that's critical. I appreciate Mayor Foster talking about having an inclusive town and the flag raising, but you didn't say anything about taking the flags down, you didn't, it doesn't feel inclusive. I know there are several of us here who were invited to speak at the flag raising, and we're not going, because we don't feel like members of your town, right? And so I think whatever happened, happened, but you need to make efforts to make it right. Now, what's happened is under the bridge, but you need to make efforts to make it right. I'm gonna see the rest of my time till, because they speak for many, many, many of us who sign petitions.
Thank you for that, Kristen, my name is Dulce Sasso, my pronouns are they/them, and I represent now three-hundred-and-fifty people who signed a petition, so I'm former sitting here tonight. Based on data published in 2021, the Trevor Project estimates an LGBTQ+ youth attempt suicide every forty-five seconds. That data was collected before hundreds of pieces of legislation were passed around the country targeting LGBTQ people, forcing our symbols, our leaders, and our traditions out of public life, denying us medical care, targeting us in mass shootings, and emboldening violent rhetoric against us. On December twenty-second, 2022, as Austin said, the borough passed a resolution dedicating itself to, quote, "ensuring the safety, security, acceptance, and freedoms of all members of the LGBTQ+ community." End quote. Over the last twenty-six months, I have spent hundreds of hours creating an LGBTQ+ nonprofit called Queer Candy to boldly affirm LGBTQ... nonprofit called Queer Candy to boldly affirm LGBTQ youth with a large-scale Pride Music Festival commensurate with our town's status as an LGBTQ plus haven. We received cooperation from the town for the last two of those twenty-six months. That was more than nothing. But not at all commensurate with the scale of the event or its grave importance. We have faced a shocking and inexplicable series of barriers, including two failed Heart Partners grant attempts in which typical rules and practices were changed, both times that put us at a market disadvantage, as I spoke to you on the day, Mayor Foster, and let you, and made you aware of. This all came with a series of assurances from old corners that everyone shared our goals, that we had received support when we clearly hadn't, or most often, that our town government is not ill-intentioned, just wildly incompetent. I was unwilling to accept any of those explanations. As a clinical psychologist who speaks and consults around the state about cultural competence with LGBTQ plus people, I am well acquainted with the large body of research Kristen just mentioned that demonstrates scientifically that affirming LGBTQ people lowers suicide risk for youth and young adults, all youth and young adults, regardless of identity status. Children are frightened and stressed when their peers and their families are frightened and stressed. As we speak, the Board of Education in Middletown right now is meeting to pass a forced outing resolution. The youth of Middletown know exactly where folks in their town stand. In fact, there are many members of the Pride Center of New Jersey who could not be here tonight because they are in Middletown fighting that resolution. In some ways, it is even more damaging to be told over and over that you live in an LGBTQ plus farming town with a large LGBTQ plus population, but yet experience a different reality that adults will not speak of or acknowledge, one that pervades town life and our school system in ways far too extensive to detail here. The words, thank you. Words in your resolution will not protect our kids anymore than the words in the transgender student policy I co-wrote years ago that's never been implemented, but became a model for other towns around the state who actually follow it. So instead of being a true leader, the true leader we claim to be to the media when that policy was passed, we went on in 2018 to become an early adopter of drag story hour bans, a practice which has spread around the country, leading in some states to laws subjecting anyone gender nonconforming to possible arrest in public spaces. Our life-affirming, indeed, life-saving practice is to fly this flag for the month of June. When you remove our flags in the middle of June, at a time when we are being legislated out of public spaces, erased from history, and repeatedly called pedophiles, rumors, and dangerous to children, including on the event pages for Queer Candy, an event that was supported and, and, I can't think of the word, by the Human Relations Committee. End at the event itself, where there were several security issues. Whether intentional or not, the impact of removing those flags is a sense of cultural cluelessness at best, and a worse, the impression that you shared this agenda of our erasure and demonization. For those who did not have to explain this action to your children last week, imagine explaining the removal of the Christmas tree downtown on December thirteenth, after having it put up on December seventh. In the context of large-scale attacks on many forms against Christians around the country, that would be the analogy, we request that rather than insisting that one flag raising is an adequate gesture for Pride Month, that you, quote, "hold programs and activities," and, quote, "falsor greater understanding." These are your words from your resolution, including the understanding that when you take down this flag, you are erasing people of every faith, every race, every affinity group, of all abilities and statuses, yes, including our Orthodox Jewish LGBTQ siblings, some who have spoken here tonight, whom we refuse to be divided from and pitted against. The LGBTQ community is powerfully intersectional, and thus, any claim that our needs and safety are coming at the expense of other groups is inherently attacking of those same communities that those are claiming to support. Have you ever physically wrapped yourself in a flag because its existence made you feel like you could go on living? I have. Different symbols have different meaning and importance to different groups. Thus, the flag policy that treats everyone equally that you all instituted on June thirteenth after this incident may not in fact be equitable. I don't know if you are aware that the rules limiting all or most flags, such as the one added as an addendum to the town's flag policy after the pride flags were removed, have been utilized in towns around the country, including in New Jersey, where outright bans on the pride flag have been tried and rejected by a majority of citizens. These so-called soft bans effectively ban the pride flag by targeting an area of need for LGBTQ people while leaving intact symbols for other groups, such as the displaying of religious holiday symbols, murals, and statues. The analogy would be to groups banning holiday displays in order to avoid having to display a menorah along with Christian nativity scenes. Indeed, soft bans have been used historically and currently to remove Jewish symbols in public spaces.
Yes.
This public letter that I'm holding, that I have here, put out by the ACLU in February, wholly rejected these soft bans of the pride flag, quoting a relevant legal precedent in Shertliff versus the City of Boston, stating, quote, "When the government is speaking for itself, the government may decide which view it wishes to express. And the First Amendment does not demand airtime for all views." Which is why we're not standing here arguing about flying the straight flag for seven days and having a pride raising for white, a flag raising for the white supremacist flag. We're not doing that. And never would that even come up. According to the ACLU, Highland Park elected officials are free to choose what symbols to display, where, and for how long. I understand this body is not responsible for all of the things that I'm describing, but you are responsible for public safety. In fact, you passed a resolution to protect the LGBTQ plus population in this town. We submit that this body should consider scientific data related to public safety above all in making decisions to display flags and other symbols in considering how and how much to affirm the LGBTQ plus community. As stated in our petition, we request that you each individually state whether you are in favor or against a generous, visible display of pride flags in Highland Park for the duration of Pride Month, as is common practice in towns around the state, as the most basic cultural sensitivity and respect for the LGBTQ community, and most importantly, to protect all youth regardless of LGBTQ plus status from suicide risk. If your answer is no, that you do not support that, please tell us what public good, what goal, what aim you would prioritize over keeping our youth alive. Thank you for your time.
My name is Samantha. I didn't appear in today's conference, but I wanted to remember or stop me. I cannot speak for everybody. I can speak for myself. And I just want to say I fully support our LGBTQ plus community, bringing everything that I have. And I know I'm not the only one who feels this way. Just focusing on the suicide case alone, you could save one life. That's worth everything. And besides that, there's so much hate and divide going on in the world between the corporations, the government, all the different sides of things going on. There's only a spread of hate, hate, hate. Any way that we could bring more love and more unity to this world is worth everything as well. And when I heard the flag was taken down, I was almost devastated. I did not believe that we live in that kind of town. And I still don't believe we live in that kind of town. I think the fact that people are here to represent shows us that this is not the kind of town we live in. So I hope we'll be put back up and that everything will continue as it needs to continue. And yeah, I did want to do something else, but I forgot.
Highland Park is three twenty-one One Street. I wasn't going to speak tonight. I was going to let others do the speaking for me and to represent the community, but I, after listening to that statement and the lack of statement from Mayor Foster, I felt compelled to speak. I was the co-chair of the Human Relations Commission until my partner, Austin, who spoke earlier this time, should now be chair of the HRC. Well, for now, anyway. I have a lot of things to say and a lot of context into the background and the timeline of the things that took place, what happened, what didn't happen, that should have happened. But I'm not going to get into that because a lot of that has been covered and you all can overall or can see what's going on online. Okay, I'm very emotional right now. I am an LGBTQ, I'm a parent of LGBTQ children. And not just because I'm the chair of the HRC, I'm a speaker, but I have to speak out for my children. It's not what we supported, but I have grown as a parent and I have been accepting and loving and affirming, and this community needs to do that. This mayor council needs to do that. And I communicated yesterday with Council President Matt Hirsch after the team flag raising and to the over the phone with Harry Glazer. I mentioned that the only way to move forward was for Matt to make a statement, which he did, and I appreciate that, thank you so much. From Mayor Foster to be transparent, to take accountability, to apologize, and not just to restore the flags, but I wanted to organize a rally march in support of the LGBTQ plus community on Monday, June twenty-sixth, starting at five-thirty on Raritan Avenue and ending in the community center, culminating in the flag base, the pride flag raising, as well as to reinstate flags on the avenue and amend the policy that was just amended. That should coincide in support and even happening in downtown, which I know Matt and I discussed previous to when I was at a paper. I cannot organize a pride flag raising until this thing takes place. And I don't feel that we can honor the LGBT community by just saying we'll have it put up. And raise the flag at the community center, it would be a shame to fly them in our downtown. I'm a mother of LGBTQ children who underwent tremendous discrimination, not just in their communities, but of the world. I felt that I needed to speak tonight, and actually I'm finishing that I didn't stand beside the board for chair, Austin, tonight, and support for when he spoke. But if you want to heal and build bridges in this town, and if you want to uphold and honor the message in the resolution in support of the LGBT community that was passed unanimously by this council on December twentieth, twenty twenty-two, adding the progressive values that make Highland Park a safe space for all, then I don't see that happening without being honest and taking accountability and making a commitment to not be swayed by LGBTQ. Thank you.
Is there anyone in line that would just speak?
Yes, there is. Mayor, I see four hands up out of thirty-two attendees. First lineup is Grace Budwarding. Grace, I needed you. Hopefully you can read yourself and should be, to mention your name and address.
Yes, hello. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I am, as Clara previously stated, I am the co-president of the Sexuality and Gender Alliance at the high school. I, my pronouns are she/her, and I identify as bisexual. Both of my parents also identify as bisexual. I was raised in the gay community, and their love is incredibly important to me. Being queer is not just my identity, but it is my family, and it is my heritage. And my parents did not march at pride marches for years for my right to love who I want to, only for you all to bow to religious pressure. It is ridiculous, and it is cowardly, and you disgust me. Thank you.
Like Ahava Friday Night, you're next. Please state your name and address for the record.
Ahava Friday Night, sixty-two Grant Avenue. I just want to express my tremendous appreciation to Del Sasso and the other members, organizers of Queer Candy for their careful choice of words in discussing this issue that is so deeply upsetting. There are many who are throwing out various negative adjectives to describe people who they disagree with. And I really appreciate the people who have chosen to really take the high road, and no matter how upset they are, be very careful in their choice of language, to understand the tremendous diversity that exists in our community as a whole, within the LGBTQ plus community, within the Orthodox community, and not turn this into an us versus them situation from which no one can gain. I understand the tremendous frustration that they have with the fact that the council and the mayor have still not addressed what happened with those four flags. I don't know what the legal status is. I understand why the synagogue would make the request. I don't necessarily fully understand why it was granted. I am concerned about the precedent in terms of, well, you take them down for the synagogue, what if there's a business that doesn't want them? And the worst possible thing would be a patchwork of flags based on the opinions of particular people who want them or don't want them in front of their businesses. So I think that is concerning, and I think that we can't move forward as a community without a better understanding of what happened in that situation.
The next speaker is Randy Ostrow. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Randy Ostrow of two twenty Wayne Street, Highland Park. I'm incredibly disappointed with what has been shared regarding the Orthodox Jewish community, the mayor, and the pride flags along Raritan Avenue. I've been a member of the Orthodox Jewish community in Highland Park for twenty-five years, and I'm the parent of a remarkable and brilliant queer young woman. She and I attended the Queer Candy Pride Festival, thanks to Dell and everyone else who organized, and we marveled at how lovely it was to live in a town that's turned people like her to their lives freely and openly as their authentic selves. While our daughter has found acceptance and support in the Orthodox Jewish community from her friends, family, and certain teachers, it's always been the case. Having pride flags on display in Highland Park demonstrates to those in the LGBT community from all backgrounds that our town is an affirming and safe place to be. As the organization JQY, Jewish Queer Youth, states in their mission statement, LGBTQ youth from Orthodox, Hasidic, and Sephardic communities often feel alone, isolated, and silenced. Many are forced to choose between remaining in the closet or leaving their faith. Our daughter has proudly decided that she will not choose. She can be both and. As JQY shares the phrase, "Elu v'elu" affirms both Jewish and queer values, both these and those. While it was incredibly disheartening to learn that it's possible that several local rabbis spoke against the placement of the pride flags, I can't say that I was completely surprised, although I can say that I would have hoped that they do better, especially given the fact that they definitely have queer congregants who are contributing and valued members of their congregations and are equally proud of all parts of themselves, including being Orthodox Jewish and being queer. Perhaps what is most disappointing of all is that it appears that the mayor may have bowed to pressure to remove the flags under the impression that it was the right thing to do. I wholeheartedly believe that it was not. It was in no It was in no one's best interest to remove those flags. The flags are not culturally insensitive. In fact, one of the people behind the creation of the pride flag in nineteen seventy eight was Harvey Milk, a Jewish and queer activist and politician. Perhaps some members of the local Orthodox Jewish community did complain about the flags. Okay, what about those who did not complain? Why are the opinions of those who complained valued above those who did not? Or those who most need to see those flags, perhaps even before entering a house of worship, where they know some people may not accept them? Perhaps seeing those flags on their walk to shul or as they entered congregation Ohav Ameth, which literally means lover of truth, gave them the strength and resolve to begin or continue living their lives as their authentic selves, as both and, as Orthodox Jewish and queer. The decision to remove the flags was poor decision-making at best and something far more dangerous at worst, especially considering the flags were in a public space. I'd like to believe it was the former rather than the latter, and I call on the mayor to replace the flags for the remainder of the month to connect with Jewish queer organizations such as JQY and Eshel, which can help educate and inform her regarding varying perspectives on queerness in the Orthodox Jewish community and to fully and transparently share what actually transpired so that we can all move forward and begin to heal as a community. Thank you.
One more, Rob Scott, it looks like he came back. Please state your name and address.
Yes, my name is Rob Scott. I live at twenty five South Second Avenue in Highland Park. And I wanted to speak about the flags. I want my family and my neighbors to be safe. And the flags are symbols, they're powerful symbols and they're particularly important symbols right now. I think I want the council to be conscious that this thing that's happening in Highland Park is not happening in isolation. There is a current in this country where there are many who would just like to legislate queer people out of existence. And I feel that kind of existential threat to my family and my neighbors. And the flags, right? Are a way that we can stand up to that in Highland Park and that's really important to do. I grew up in Montana and I have found myself just like bawling and crying. And when I see what the people I grew up with in the Montana Legislature are doing to Zoe's effort, kicked her out, an elected legislator, kicked her out of the chamber, right? And wouldn't let her speak. And the thing is Highland Park is a different place, but we have to stand up collectively and say, that can never, ever happen again. Or never happen here, right? We can't let that happen here. And the way we stand up is with a symbol, right? And I hope you heard some of the anger from people and I hope you heard some of the joy from people when they saw them up. I hope you heard the gentleman who said so empathically about how it's important to just have a signal. It's okay to be me, because that's what they're about, right? And they're, they're also a signal that in this community, we accept everyone and it's okay to be you, right? So I would like you to issue the best kind of apology for the muddled way this went down and just put them up for the whole month. And then address the issue of was there bowing to pressure? Because the reality is, is I saw all the Twitter boasting about how, oh, I talked to my rabbi and we got the mayor to take the flags down from an account that just spews forth bigotry, retweeting the genocidal, you know, libs of TikTok and blaming the Canadian forest fires on Pride Month, right? That kind of association, that is grim and dark and awful. And if our mayor or council bowed to that kind of pressure, we need a clear explanation and a reversal. Thank you very much.
Mayor, no more people on the.
Hi, Eric, looking again, I just would, after hearing all of this, being so moved, I would like to know what the mayor thinks. You, you, you posted something on Facebook apologizing for poor communication. Surely this outpouring, these children talking about the importance of those specific flags that were removed. I would love to hear your thoughts.
Let me start off by saying that I'm the mayor for all of Highland Park, not parts of Highland Park, the entire town. And if members of this town comes to me and says they have a concern about X or Y, one of my responsibility is to look into that concern and find ways to address those concerns because I'm not the mayor for one part or the other. It's the entire, it's in its entirety. I did have a conversation, a very private conversation with a rabbi. And our request was made. First of all, the council did not approve those flags to be on the avenue. The event was happening, which is square candy. The flags that were taken down was directly in front of the synagogue.
Four were in front of the synagogue.
That was taken down was in front of the synagogues. The other flags remained on the avenue and on, and on the street where the event was taking place. Because I personally went to that event. I was there.
There were no flags on the street.
There were no flags on the street.
They, I don't know what happened to those flags, but I know personally, four flags were removed, four flags and four flags only. Let me ask you a question, Council President Hirsch, how many flags were on the avenue?
Thirty.
And only four was removed. No other, so let me very, let me be very clear. You asked me for an answer, let me give the answer, okay? So the four flags, the four flags were removed on that Friday afternoon. The event happened on Sunday and Monday, the rest of the flags, as it is with our policy, was removed. So that's what happened to the remainder of the flags that are not flown now on the avenues. We have a policy that when we do events here in the borough, that the flags stay up for seven days at the community center. And for all the events that have occurred, the flag have stayed up for seven days. Prior to the policy that we've put in place and interact and started doing more flag raising in our town, we have been raising the pride flag at the community center for the past three years. This year was the only year where we're going to have a ceremony, but for the past three years, we have been raising the flag. The mayor and council would say a few comments and that was it, but we proudly, proudly raised that flag. When I got into my office this past January, one of the first things that I did is one of that flag that Dell Sasso had is hanging in my office because I have no problem with nobody from any community. So it could be the queer community, LGBTQ community, the pride community. I have no issue because I personally took one of those flags and I, and it's displayed in my office. I was proud to hang that flag in my office. There's three flags that's hung in my office. The first flag that went up was the pride flag. Then eventually I got an American flag and the state of New Jersey flag came in afterward. But that flag has been on my wall in my office because I believe in an open and welcoming community for everyone. So to hear the comments, it's good that you're all here, your voice and your opinion, I welcome it. I listen, I took notes. So maybe when the comment or the concern came to me on that Friday afternoon, maybe I should have taken a step back and listened and waited. But that did not happen and the air is human and I happen to be human. And the next time, or should there be a next time that this, similar to this or something like this comes about, I will take a little bit more time to process. But I was eager to create a one Highland Park where we all felt like we had a place and we had a voice. But as I said before, I have listened to each and every one of you very carefully tonight and your voices have been heard. I hear you clearly. And as I said, I'm mayor for all of Highland Park and I want to create a welcome and inclusive environment for all. So maybe I made a misstep and the next time, when I do receive a request from, no matter what community, I'll take, do my twenty four hour rule that I normally follow. I normally write stuff down for twenty four hours and if I feel the same way the next morning, then I act on it. And lesson learned.
Thank you for that. I feel like you're this close to an apology, but I will take it. There was no, you were, the one thing I would say is that there's a difference when someone is asking for a thing to be removed. There is a statement in removal that is incredibly powerful and difficult and hurtful. And I appreciate that you've heard it, I really do. I think admission is the first step towards, towards progress. I think that was something that a lot of us wanted to hear. I really, really hope you take these words to heart, especially about the kids and what was done in putting up those flags was a gift to them. And what was done by kicking them down was an attack. And I'm glad you recognized that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does she recognize them?
Kind of, oh yeah, you go, you go.
We are, just one moment, please, we're supposed to end our meeting officially at nine o'clock. It is now nine oh five. Will the council agree for another ten minutes?
Yes.
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 Okay, so we'll end at nine fifteen. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. That allows enough time for each of you, as three hundred and fifty now people have requested, to individually state whether you are in favor of or against a generous, visible display of pride flags. Highland Park for the duration of Pride Month, as is common practice in towns around the state, most importantly, to protect all youth regardless of LGBTQ status from suicide risk.
Of course, yes.
Yes. Preliminary discussion, I would like to see a permanent expression of pride, celebration of pride in form of an art mural. I, I feel so pleased that we're with the Arts Commission and just let you know, I mean, it's a, it's a, I understand, a process to find a suitable space to get someone in a private property area to agree to it. But if anything I can do to.
Hi, it's my, yes, I'd also like to thank the youth that spoke tonight. I have known you guys since second grade and I'm so very proud of you.
Anyone else?
Yes. I know that some of you think of me as a privilege, white privilege. But for those of you who really know me and have known me for twenty years, have known my history, my African-American life and the mayor was the first slate of Black women to run for office here in the park twenty six. And for those of you who really know me, I've been probably one of the most, not progressive, but just radical advocates for the rights of everyone. So I vote absolutely, and I've been pushing for that for a long time, as well as more representation. And anybody who's listened has heard me say over and over again, one of the ways that we move forward is to define who we are here in this town, not anywhere else. Not in the county, not in the state, not in this nation, which is radically turning against the mindset of that that we have here in Highland Park, of freedom, liberty, a little looseness around the edges and maybe not perfect everywhere. But we're under threat even from people of our state. But first we define who we are and this is part of the process and it's messy. And there's no bad guys and there's no good guys and there's no absolute winners and there's no absolute losers. And one of the experiences I had growing up in politics, running with my father at seven years old, wearing a really ridiculous costume. And that's seven years ago. Is that it's a messy process. It always has been, it always will be and it's going to be that here. So there's no absolutism on any side as we go through this messy process of redefining who we are. Who we were twenty years ago. I chose to move here. I lived here all through the seventies. I then moved out and I practiced in Atlantic City as a county prosecutor for a long time. But we chose to move back here because of racial incidents in South Jersey that threatened our families. So we moved up here and I gave my wife two choices. Highland Park, we're not clear because of the inclusivity even back then, as we were starting to generate. And it was because of the welcoming, welcomingness of the Jewish community and the welcomingness of the then somewhat underground gay community. It was, but it was quietly welcoming and was safe. And then we found out that my place was way too expensive. So we moved to Highland Park by choice. And many of you are here.
That was a yes to the pride flags, right?
Absolutely.
I would just like to express my, I'm sorry, this happened during Pride Month for you guys. I'm, I'm sorry. I think, I think what happened and what you see is a lack of communication as to what happened with us. Like some of you said, the, I think our flag policy was changed. I didn't know that. I think that policy was probably old, outdated, like we, we didn't even have a discussion about it. A lot of things, there was a lot of miscommunication. At the end, when I drove down Main Street, I saw it, I smiled, I lit up. I didn't know how they got there. I thought it was, I, I liked it, you know? And I think just, just going forward, we have to, we have to be uniformed. We have to also communicate with each other and make sure that, and I received Dell's email as well too about all of the process and having the event successful and making sure everything was set up as well too. And, and I, I just think that we need to communicate more, even if that chair or whoever's doing the event just run an email page, because I know in the summer we only meet once. Like, and the communication when they came down, like, I mean, a lot of us didn't really have, know what really happened, what's going on. I saw petition. It's not, it's not really, it's not an excuse and we could have done better for you guys. And I'm, I'm sorry that you're hurt with our miscommunication and definitely try to do better for the remaining of the month and definitely for next year and going forward as well.
Yes, so is that a yes?
That's a yes and better communication. So we can work with you guys and this won't happen, I guess.
But yes to the flags, yes to communication, great. But this is specifically, this petition is about having this widely displayed visibly for all Pride Month.
Yeah, that, yes, yes.
Thank you.
And I'm telling you going forward, so.
Thank you, thank you.
I certainly think that we did a lousy job at, first of all, communication, second of all, at expectations. We never had an expectation that any of the flags were going to be up for a month. That being said, I am fully in favor of having a, a, a symbol for the month, having a, having a, a set of, that may be the artwork that Jason talked about, that may be the flag at the community center that Jason talked about. I think, I think we could do something like that, that recognizes the importance of the month. I think this, I think we could do something like that, that recognizes um uh the importance of the month. Um, but I do think that this was a, 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 in this communication, I think it was also a expectation. There was expectations that were presented to the community about what was gonna happen, that were not the expectations that we had, not the expectations that the overall community had. We've never had flags on their, on the um, on the avenue for a month. Um, and so I am 100% in favor of doing something a month long, 100% in recognizing that this is Pride Month. Um, how that plays itself out next year, that's a discussion that we ought to have, that's a thing that we have. Whether that flag is at the community center, whether there is an artwork, whether there's something like that. I think that we can do something like that. Um, so i- is that an answer, is that the answer you're looking for? I'm not sure that it is, but I'll tell you that I think that we can go.
It sounds like it's no or maybe to a visible display of pride flags for the duration of the month.
I, I don't know what that, I, to be honest, I. I'm, I, I don't know exactly what that entails or what that means. I am in favor of having a display of pride, a display of the community for the entire month. I don't know that I believe that that's on the avenue, I don't know that I believe that it's, that that's the appropriate place. But I certainly think that there could be a display for a month.
Thank you for your answer.
I, I think, I think we're just trying to give you a context of what happened, that is not a kind of like secret as to what went wrong. Like this is what went wrong.
But we're not about what happens now, that stuff.
Yeah, going forward, exactly.
Also, that, that part of it doesn't address the four flags that were removed. But we've heard, we've heard all of them, we've heard the explanation, we appreciate it. We're, we're eager to hear the mayor's response.
Oh, well, I believe that, let me just go back three, for the past three years, we have been raising the flag here in the borough.
So we want a response to what's on the.
I am getting ready to answer.
Okay, thank you.
Please give me the courtesy of doing so.
Absolutely, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm cognizant of the time.
Um, for the past three years, we've been raising the flag at the borough. Oftentimes it's raised at the first of the month before.
Okay, I apologize.
So I, I get, I, I get my couple of minutes back before, okay, so, all right. So what I'm in favor of is having the flag flown in front of Borough Hall. I would support something like that, having the flag thrown in front of Borough Hall until the end of the month.
So no. What would your response be to the youth who stood up here and said one flag is not enough?
One flag is not enough, we're having, if, the flag is gonna be flown in front of Borough Hall until the end of the month. And we're doing the, the, on Monday, the other flag is gonna be flown, that's not one flag. Okay, and we're talking about creating uh murals for next year, so the flag can be permanently displayed someplace in town.
And the flag's not going up to the 26th, so it's really up for five days? Seven, eight days?
That's a while.
We appreciate your answer, the answer was no. Thank you all for your answers.
Um, sorry, call up here again, uh, George Wilson.
Oh, um, it's, we said, we had did an extension for nine fifteen, it's now nine twenty.
I respectfully submit though, that the majority of that time is taken up by the council members speaking instead of the public and it was supposed to be time for public comment.
Public comment, a, as a matter of fact, it went until nine, nine oh five.
We got majority of council comment.
Public comment ended at nine o'clock, we extended it to nine oh five.
Well, we have some parts because of this um disconnection.
And that's why we went again until nine twenty.
Okay. Motion to extend public comment, please.
Time please, what's the time?
It's nine twenty.
No, how much time do you want to have?
Maybe nine thirty?
I have no objection to nine thirty.
A, a hard stop at nine thirty.
I'll, I'll try to keep it, uh, keep it short in this one part. Uh, I just wanted to address, um, you know, the, the, there, we, we've all said a lot of the same things, but there were some points brought up on the other, uh, uh, on the other side that, gee, you have this problem of, you know, the synagogue was objecting on the grounds that they felt that the, that the flag represented something that went against their core beliefs and, you know, that's a question that deserves answering. Uh, so I wanted to, wanted to address it. The problem is that we, we already kind of know the answer to that. I mean, I, I'm Jewish, I reject Jesus, that goes against Christianity's core beliefs. Would, would they like take down, um, uh, you know, decorations from in front of the church on the grounds that it violates the core beliefs of Christianity? Um, there are Hindus in this town who worship various other gods, which goes against the core beliefs of Judaism and Christianity and Islam. And, but we have this whole thing that, that's, we're, we're supposed to allow that. I don't under, you know, I can understand the, the, the divisiveness maybe and disagreements, but I don't understand why, why the, the LGBTQ community is targeted by this, this extra hate, as I call it. You know, what is it that they're doing that's worse, that's more, that, that violates my core beliefs worse than, you know, 15 other people out there, you know, from other, from other cultures? So just a thing, just a thing to think about and answer to that.
She wanted, wanted to address the public. Uh, last week, I was mad, I was frustrated and I was really, really sad at what I saw as a, uh, just a, a really poor leadership decision. Tonight I'm hopeful because of who's here in this room. We've got straight allies, we've got the queer community and there are orthodox allies here and ortho, members of the orthodox queer community. And I don't cry, I haven't cried in years, ask my wife, I've been cheering up tonight. So I am hopeful that regardless of what happens within the administration, that the people in this room can make change in this town. Thank you for coming.
Uh, my name's Blair Afgar, I'm over on Hunter Street. And I'm a historian by training and I have been sitting up here and I was really struck by Mayor Foster's comments regarding, you know, the attempt to try to balance the needs of various communities in this town. And a struggle which is worth fighting for. But again, as a historian, I really have to ask and truly urge, if you haven't, are you familiar with the works of Karl Popper? Have you heard of him? If you haven't, and, and I would say this for pretty much everyone in the room, you should go out and read about The Paradox of Tolerance. It is truly um one of the foundational texts, philosophically speaking, to the protection of democracy in this country and really abroad. That it really urges people to think about the very things that they are thinking are, you know, are tolerant, right? Of various ideologies, various groups. But in reality, you cannot have tolerance when you accept intolerance.
Yes.
And by that, I'm trying to balance the needs of a small group who are calling for what amounts to intolerance. You are allowing a crack in that will seek to destabilize the means of tolerance throughout the entire community. I just, I really hope that as leaders of the community, to go out and find this and read it. It's, uh, it was written in response to World War II, 1945. It is truly an important text and I really think that you should go in and just read it. Um, and hopefully that'll help guide your judgment moving forward and kind of seeking to balance the needs of various communities. Um, thank you.
Nancy Sumner, Amherst Street, uh, also. So there've been some amazing things that have been said this evening by so many people and I want to thank especially all the kids that got up here, because I know even my heart pounds every time I walk up to the microphone. Um. So one of the things that um I heard from our mayor, um, and thank you for this, I see is that in the future, you will stop, think, consider for 24 hours. Um, and, um, and also bring together the community. And um, I think that we have, well, I shouldn't say we, all of the community here, all of us, has done something which has put pressure on all of you to make an instantaneous decision on what we need to do for the town. And so I, um, I'm going to ask you to please take a moment and to reconsider. Um, to take a moment and say, you know what, some mistakes were made in the way in which folks in leadership went about putting up the flags. Some mistakes were made in the process of communicating and the decisions about how everything happened. And to say, you know, maybe what we need to do is put, um, is, is use the resources that this, that this town, this council, this leadership group has of the Human Rights Commission and ask the Human Rights Commission to meet and come together about a decision about what needs to happen for the rest of the month. Um, and that, uh, you know, that instead of perhaps making a decision feeling stressed, feeling pressured, um, but to make a decision from a moment of breath and think about the entire town and the entire community and everything that's been said and put it in the hands of the people who have, um, really been working hard uh in that Human Rights Commission to make everybody in town feel that they are part of this community and work together. So I ask, ask that maybe that's what makes sense, there's been a couple of different things coming forward this evening, rather than anybody making a split judgment um in the time of, of heat and frustration that's going on. About that, thank you.
That said, we're at the nine thirty, will we have?
Nine thirty.
A little longer.
Hi, um, Jasper Majeski, 100 South Fourth. Um, I completely agree with the last speaker and I wanted to bring up something to consider for the future, you know, once these things uh go through, is that a single flag is not enough at all to sort of change the atmosphere of the town or convey support. And when it's a single flag, it's just a mere formality. And so I think going in the future, ideally, like, this is definitely something we should be aiming for to have more flags in places where, you know, aforementioned children and teenagers hang out, where they can feel accepted, you know, throughout the town. Um, that's all, thank you.
I do see one hand raised online, if there's time.
There's like one minute left.
All right, you want me to call?
Just one minute?
Two minutes.
Two minutes.
All righty, uh, Rob Scott.
I just wanted to say, I did not react very well to the idea of we're just gonna raise the flag in front of Borough Hall. I think that cuts against what so many people spoke about, right? My daughter spoke about walking home from school and feeling uplifted seeing the flags. She's not gonna be walking by Borough Hall, right? And I, I think that is kind of a, I, I don't know, that feels like a further insult to bury it in formality, you know, oh, we did our thing. And, and I think what folks said about, hey, take a few minutes, think this through and what can be done to bring them back, embrace the community, um, is, is really worth doing. So um, maybe think about that a little more.
Thank you all for coming, thank you all for sharing, will take it with us when we leave. Um, there were a lot of good things that was shared tonight and I'm quite sure the council will, will all take that under advisement as we move forward, thank you. Now we're gonna move, motion to adjourn and move into executive session. Oh, resolution? Oh, oh. I have more work to do. Executive session, resolution. Councilman Neil?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Stone?
Motion to adjourn to executive session.
Motion.
On the paper?
Claire. Claire. Claire.
Claire. Claire.